We're live. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December fourteenth meeting of the Charlton Board of Selectment. If you could join me, rise and say in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. We had a pretty heavy administrative meeting tonight, and thankfully, it's hopefully our last one of the year as well. So that being said, first up, we doing the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty-third.
I would make a motion we accept those minutes as written.
Second of discussion.
A second.
All right, any discussion? Here we go, no, all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. That is unanimous. Next up, community relations.
It'll be me. The town hall will be closed on Thursday, December twenty-third and December thirtieth. We wish everybody safe and happy holidays. Two thousand twenty-two dog licenses are now viable at town clerk's office during business hours, or online application can be mailed or dropped in Dropbox, or payment can be made at the townofcharlton.net. Online payments for dog licenses are now viable. The fiscal year two thousand and two tax rate was certified now at thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Bills will be mailed at the end of December, and they will be due in February. Holiday hours for Casella in Oxford, because the upcoming holidays fall on Saturdays, Casella will be closed on December twenty-fifth, January first. They will be open both Fridays, December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first for Charlton residents between seven and noon. They will also be adding a container just for the cardboard. Business and nonprofit assistance grants in the amount of up to twenty thousand dollars are viable. To apply, you guys can go on the town website. The application is right there. You can print it out. The outline with the dates is right on it as well, so everybody knows when to apply it to whom. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to us, and I want to wish you everyone healthy and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Bashi. You too. Any other comments from the board on community relations or announcements before we go to open forum?
I would just like to, Bashi did a great job on adding the container for cardboard. It's probably, if I were to guess, it's probably going to be huge.
Yeah.
There was a few, there's a little bit of cardboard being bounced around Charlton nowadays. And I've seen questions on social media where to put it, and so that's a really good, that's a good point to bring up, I think.
And they are big, so you can fit in bigger boxes for the furniture or TVs.
Here. All right, anyone here for open forum? And no one on open forum. See, we do a couple appointments. First up, we're doing cultural council.
Attached is a tell bank form for Angela Castellato, seeking to be appointed to the cultural council. The cultural council is recommending the appointment. The expiration date for the appointment would be June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I recommend the board make that appointment.
Wishes of the board.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve Angela Castellato as written.
A second.
Second, in discussion. Very none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that's unanimous. Angela, welcome to the show. Next up, the, oh, the public records assistant. Well, this is a nice thing for Dan and Mary.
As previously presented to the board, the police department has sought to fill the position of public records assistant. Following internal posting for the position, we did receive one application. I recommend that the board appoint Board of Selectment Executive Assistant Mary Devlin to the position of public records assistant. The hours for the position are opposite that of town hall hours. Mary is extremely knowledgeable in the field of public records management and would be a tremendous resource to the police department. As Mary would be holding both positions concurrently, the appointment would also need to include delegating each position as special municipal employee.
Thoughts from the board? I'd only say if we are in favor of this to, I would prefer a motion that combines those two things, the inclusive of the appointment and delegating each position as the SME.
As far as the, if I may through the chair, as far as mentioning and delegating someone as a special municipal employee, what does that really entail more for the people probably?
It's an administrative process that allows somebody to hold multiple positions within the municipality at a single time, without being a conflict.
And as far as that weighs on pay equity and the scale and all that type of thing?
No impact.
No, no impact on that at all.
Good question. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion we accept Mary as, I'm sure the chief is here to support it, so he's happy.
Yeah.
You are, okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, that was a motion.
And just to be clear, that's inclusive of the appointment and the SME delegation.
Yeah.
Cool. Any further discussion? Here we go, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, that's unanimous. Mary, we look forward to working with you over at the police station as well. You know what? We got two minutes. Let's do the ACO, if possible.
At the board's September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, you approved the request for a second assistant animal control officer. This position would assist with vacations, time off, and/or illness. It would be a position that can assist the animal control officer whenever needed. Five applications were received. Two were offered interviews. The recommendation is to appoint Edward Hart of Dudley, Mass. as assistant animal control officer. This is a stipend position at a hundred and thirteen dollars a week. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
I just want to add, I actually saw his resume in the office. It's actually pretty impressive. If you get a chance, take a look at it. He's very experienced. Thoughts from the board? Which is another nice way of asking me for a motion, or asking for a motion.
Everyone's looking at me for a motion. Yeah, I would make a motion that we appoint.
I have a motion. Steve, do I have a second?
Edward Hart from Dudley to assistant animal control officer.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Patsy. Discussion. Here we go, no, all's in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that's unanimous. And actually, some kind of sad news, but yet happy at the same time. Angie, let's talk around retirements. Not yours.
So close. Attached is a notice from Police Sergeant Gary Wood of his intention to retire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. No action is necessary for the board at this time.
Yeah, Sergeant, yeah, Sergeant Wood's a great guy. Obviously, it's going to be a great loss to the department and the town. You know, thankfully, we have him around till July thirty-first, so again, Gary, if you're out there, please be safe. You know, you got a few more months. All right, we are now up to our first appointment, six forty-five, keeping us on schedule, and the Keep Charlton Beautiful Committee. Come on up, folks. Always nice to see you. We have our, for those who don't, we have a pamphlet. If you could just introduce yourselves for the folks at home.
I'm the chairman of the, what was called the Charlton Recycling Committee, and we've done a name change to Keep Charlton Beautiful.
I'm Joe Mahoney, member of the committee.
Joe, the floor, as they say, is yours.
Well, I was just going to begin, though, by saying that the new committee, we just had a nice picture of which would be the logo.
Drew, can you get that?
It says Keep Charlton Beautiful, and we got it. Diane DeBrowski took a very nice picture of town hall that would be part of our logo. So just to let anyone know, if you go to the page, if you go to Keep Massachusetts Beautiful online, you'll see we're one of like thirty-odd communities that has joined them to get benefits from them, and so that's why we're doing name change.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm here to talk more specifically about the litter problem in town and just in general, trying to think about keeping Charlton a little more beautiful, okay? So that's kind of my concentration. And I started off by including some pictures of the trash along the side of the roads, which we don't have to go into a lot of detail. However, a lot of it is probably at one of the most beautiful pots in town up on Dresser Hill, and it's just covered with trash, the whole hill. Absolutely ridiculous. I picked up that bag, by the way, today. Then we segue into the traffic islands down on Route twenty and thirty-one. And you can see that that is not a great statement for the town to look at that as you're driving through. The sides of the roads are a little bit better, but then you go and you turn the page again and look at Oxford's done. And it's cost a lot of money to do that, I understand that, but this is the thought process that we're trying to adopt here. Trying to heighten awareness of the things we can do to help make the town look more beautiful, be more proud of the town, and let's basically clean it up. So if you go to the page where I have some written comments, again, this is just looking for ideas. There's no magic potion here. I think the chief would be the first one to tell you that littering is a very, very difficult thing to prosecute. To catch somebody littering and to make a fine stick, it's next to impossible to do. I don't know how often, Chief, that you actually apprehend somebody in the act of littering, but I know it doesn't happen a lot. I know it's extremely difficult to do. So I'm not suggesting that this little bylaw is going to result in a lot of arrests or a lot of administrative action for anybody. All we really want to do, and we're grasping at straws here a little bit, is to frighten some people by having a bylaw and having some signage that says, this is going to hurt if you get caught littering. This is not, this is not a simple stupid matter. This is going to hurt. Hopefully, some people will look at that sign and say, okay, I'll litter in Southbridge. You know, I'm not going to litter in Charlton. Whatever, I mean, the road.
Not that we're condoning littering in Southbridge.
No, no, I was just kidding.
As my phone blows up.
But you know what I mean. So I have a littering bylaw that we can talk about after we get through this page. But again, these are just some ideas that we're working on as a committee. I just want you to know about them. So if we do get a bylaw or if we do get funded for putting up some signs, then we will travel down that path. Also, this Keep Massachusetts Beautiful Committee, which encouraged us to adopt their charter with the Keep Charlton Beautiful, they have a program for children, to teach children, I guess a one-hour session where they will come in and give a talk to the kids. We could try to change the culture a little bit, get the kids to appreciate what a bad thing this is, and hopefully, they can say something to their parents. But it is a cultural thing. I mean, you don't see this problem in many places over in Europe. You don't see this problem in a lot of areas out west. Out west, they have some very severe penalties for littering. But here, it's endemic here, and we need to heighten the awareness of the problem. We're going to support Earth Day in a big way, get more students and residents out there to help pick up areas of town.
Izzy and Nina, we're looking at you, just saying.
I'm sorry?
No, Izzy and Nina, we're looking at you.
Yeah. And also, the traffic islands in town, and I have talked to the state DPW, and they have said that they'll put it on their list of things to do. But, you know, I don't know when that's going to happen, but that's a real problem. Those traffic islands are absolutely horrendous. And also, you know, if we really stretch and we someday get funded to do something about the sides of the roads and the islands, put in some flower beds, like Oxford has done, it'll look beautiful if we can find a way to do that. So how are we going to find a way to do that? Well, when I think about the problem, I think about, we need obviously a tremendous amount of funds to handle it, and how are we going to get those funds? We're going to have to use our leverage when it appears. All the businesses that we allow in town, as convenience store, McDonald's, a Dunkin' Donuts, a package store, there's probably twelve or fifteen or sixteen businesses like this that an unintended byproduct is litter. We let them in town, they make money in town, but they also cause a problem. I don't want to say they cause a problem, but like I said, an unintended consequence of their selling activity is litter. So we should be thinking about when we let those people in, what are you going to do about the litter? How can they help? Well, they could help by providing some funds. So the DPW can hire somebody. All that person does is go around and pick up litter all day long, something like that. Again, when the big companies, Walmart, Amazon, I know you guys have been picked apart by people wanting pots of that Amazon funding. Again, you know, will you hire a landscaper to maintain the traffic islands, to put flowers on the sides of the road? That costs money, too. Oxford has one full-time employee in the DPW. That's all she does is take care of all those flowers. So it gets expensive. They have a truck with a watering tank on it. I bet you they throw a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year at it easy. But it's funded through the town. Initially, you may know or hear that there was a grant, a beautification grant, that a Webster resident donated for Oxford and Webster and Dudley, and they used those grant funds to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars to buy the infrastructure, buy the pots and things like that. But again, I get back to my thing. I'm talking about leveraging these businesses when we have negotiations with them. Like we were talking with the garbage contractor earlier, Casella, and I'm thinking, you know, we got to work that into our thought process that even the garbage guys, they litter. You've seen those machines that lift that bucket up into the truck. Occasionally, you'll see trash flying around. You know, they contribute to the problem, too. So I'm just asking that we think about this more because I think by creating a fund where we can actually do something, like buy signage or buy an employee or hire an employee, then we can start to clean up some of this mess that we have in town. Frankly, I think it has to be cleaned up. I know you guys do, too. If you want to talk about one of the things, one of the things when I was, when we started on this six months or so ago, I went around town and I talked to the store owners, I talked to the chief, and really didn't come up with any great ideas about how we solve this problem. But the chief did mention that there is no town bylaw for littering. Many towns do have town bylaws. And I think it makes it somewhat easier to administer a fine if such a fine happens. Again, I'm not proposing this to go around fining people. I'm just proposing this so we can put up a sign that scares people and have some, you know, credibility to the sign. So you can read through this. The state law is very weak. It has to be adjudicated by the state courts. It takes one of the chief's officers to go down there. It's an expensive process, and you only get half of the proceeds. If you have a town bylaw, you go through the town clerk, all the proceeds come to you. But again, I don't think that's going to happen too often, but I think I'd like to put a sign up that says it's a five hundred dollar fine for littering in Charlton. And there's the sign, or something like it. I'm thinking about, you know, those historical markers that we have in town. I'm thinking about a sign about that big. You know, something to catch people's eyes, something that people will look at. Put them at the entrances to all the towns. Get a decal that will put on all of the trash containers out in front of these places that produce litter, and maybe at some critical points in town like Dresser Hill. Put a sign right up there. But again, it takes money, and we don't have any money yet to do this. So we're just asking that if you can help us in any way that you can, if you can generate some funds to do this type of thing. I hope you all agree that it's a big problem, so that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. Comments, questions from the board? Nina?
I.
Steve, Estelle?
I definitely agree it's a big problem. I do. And to the young ladies here, come Earth Day, bring the troops. And you talk about a cultural change. We did this over the years. The best way to teach a kid not to litter is to make them go pick up trash on the side of a road for two mornings, two mornings a year. The things that we found, most of it, we did it three years in a row, most of it was nip bottles.
Yeah, it's awful.
Yeah, and rubber gloves, and the kids were twelve, thirteen, but there, and there are other things we found. When I see mattresses and toilets, it just, my blood boils. You know, I think even, we've talked about the, you know, when people put mattresses beside the clothing container. How does that even make common sense to anybody, right? So maybe, maybe if we, I'd be for some type of bylaw if we include the fact that we only allow those clothing containers in public lit places where there's a lot of traffic, where someone's not just, they can't be on the end of a side road where someone's just going to toss a mattress. I think it's a big problem. I don't know if, I don't know what our limitations are as far as a five thousand dollar fine. I'd be fine with that, but I don't think, I don't know the legality of it. I don't, it's, but it's a problem, and I appreciate what you're doing. It's been bugging me for years, and when you notice it the most, it seems to be in March, when we're thinking about spring and the snowmels, and you look at those snowbankings, and it's all along Route twenty, and it's just, it's disgusting.
Am I wrong, or does, would Casella accept mattresses on a Saturday morning? Yeah, I don't think anybody in town knows that.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's going to be a waste bin, in fact. I don't know if Andrew's aware of that. He must, supposedly, in the future, there's going to be a waste bin on mattresses coming up. I just listened to a Zoom with the DEP, and it was on that, that right now, we probably, you can get rid of mattresses, I would think, at our Saturday drop-off, but they aren't going to be accepted into the general trash within the next year, I believe it is.
I think Lester, I ran into that recently just for information. There was a mattress we had to get rid of in Leicester, and they told us if you cut it open, rip it apart, throw the stuffing into a bag, and then throw the metal into the metal recycling bin, you're good to go. That was not a fun job. A mattress that wasn't owned by us, but that's what I'm just saying.
Well, that's what they said when this waste bin goes into effect with mattresses, that that's what the person, the companies that are paid to get rid of mattresses, that's what they do. They cut them apart into the three things, and that's their job.
And it was a dumpster, and he wouldn't take it without it, anyway. I don't want to digress too far, but no, I, this is something I, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Let's make Earth Day bigger. Let's make April look prettier than March in Charlton and get the kids out. I don't know how you incentivize, incentivize kids to do it.
Well, kids need community service hours, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, for NHS.
Yeah, for sure.
So we knock off any other opportunities they have for community service hours, and we leave it all on this?
I'll let you do that.
No, actually, I know my school's NHS is looking for places to do hours, so I can talk to my advisor about getting together some kids.
Right, Marissa, did Jesus, too, who's at Bay Path, is going to help? She's on our Keep Charlton Beautiful Committee, and she's going to help. But Shepherd Hill people, we'd love your involvement.
That's just Earth Day. I mean, I can tell you that I have, there's people on my road that I see every couple of days out there just picking trash when they're going for their regular walks or walking their dogs. So that's, that makes such a huge difference, so it's, I couldn't imagine my children ever throwing anything out of the window. It's definitely a culture, right? I can't imagine, I don't know anybody who would actually throw something out their window. So it's so weird to see so much trash. But I have a, I like the bylaw idea. I think there's no reason why we shouldn't have one, as long as it's all legal and, you know, goes through the whole, you know, legal review. But if, with prosecuting people who throw trash, if a personal, say, people have cameras everywhere. If somebody gets caught throwing the trash and they don't know they're being videoed, can that video be used? That might be.
Yeah, and certainly, some of the cameras are better, but if I was finding a license plate, if you see the Batmobile, it's very specific. You know who it is. If you see a Ford Explorer, not so much. You know, you're not going to be able to identify who owns that car, unless you can get a license plate. The cameras are getting better, and they see further, so.
So people are kind of encouraged to, you know, put up their own cameras, you know?
Well, I think that's what a lot of people do before they do that, is they do one of these. They make sure there's nobody looking, or they're, you know. Unfortunately, we guys, we're living in a nice rural community. From the city, you think this is a great place to throw my mattress, you know, so that's a difficulty, but we do.
I mean, we could put them in places, obviously.
Yeah, no, the house.
Many times, the officers will go through the trash, and they'll find a utility bill or something.
And you can use, and you can use, oh, really?
Yeah, and we try to get the town reimbursed because Jerry went down and picked it up and stuff. How many guys did he use? And we go through the court proceedings, so we try to make, you know, when it does happen.
So the bylaw could technically.
Half that money, as Jim mentioned, half that money, as Joe mentioned, that half that money goes to the state. And I'm probably more in the hole because I had to pay somebody to go.
So if we have a bylaw, then we could, the fee could be based on sending somebody to go pick it up, or like you could.
The bulk of them would stop, because they could still appeal the decision, but more than likely, they're not going. It's just like a dog license. Very few make it to court after they've gone and settled up with the clerk. She probably takes care of ninety-five percent of it. So there's going to be some stragglers that want to go to court, but.
Yeah, I agree absolutely with everything that was said. I'm very excited about the other part of it, all the flowers, you know, planters throughout the commons. And this is definitely something I would be very happy to see, and, you know, if there's anything we can do, I hope we can do it. My question, two questions. First question that I have, Andrew, to you. As far as that nonprofit assistance grant, would that file could not be used in any way, shape or form for the committee to apply?
Not if they're getting state funding with it.
I think the key is that, you know, because they're not a five oh one C three, it'd be essentially, you know, their town department looking for money. You could look to just utilize ARPA funds altogether just for a specific purpose. But we just have to kind of work through the process as to whether, you know, if that's, if that's a use of the funds that the board feels is appropriate, especially if, you know, this is going to be an ongoing operational cost, so.
And your second question, Michelle?
And the grants, you said that you are part of a mass?
Well, we are going to, January first, we'll be joining the Keep Massachusetts Beautiful organization, and then that will be, they'll give us a little webpage on their site. And they also, they even have a little five hundred dollar grant for beautification in your town to help get bees, you know, flowers, so that you'll have more bees, have a place to pollinate. But they offer a lot of assistance, and the towns, there's like thirty-something towns in our state that are part of this. But if you ever go to their website, and they're the ones that have the, for the young people, it's called Talking Trash and Recycling. And the head of it, Keep Mass Beautiful, Neil Ryan, he'll go to the school and present this video for everyone to see and then answer questions later. So we'd like to do that in the spring, before Earth Day, with whatever school people think is most appropriate, whether it's junior high, and then maybe the high school could do the help with actually getting out there, picking things up.
Can you, one more question. Have you, we looked at any private companies that want to sponsor? I mean, I see in other towns that certain companies sponsor roadsides and the flowers or whatever to get their name on it. Is this something that, have you guys, as a?
No, we haven't done that yet. It's an idea that we're going to pursue, though.
Well, they do that on highways, I know that.
Yeah.
But in your town, you'd think that you'd expect your town to take care of your town, but you mean like businesses sponsoring?
Yeah, whoever X, Y, Z company sponsors, you know, one of those, you know, the Roundwell area, areas where the grassy, to put flowers, and they kind of take care of it. You see it in other towns. You drive through and you see, you know, sponsored by, you know, X, Y, Z construction company or whatever. Maybe something like that, and it's sort of advertising and.
Yeah, yeah.
So who will come up with some kind of a numbers? Who can come up with some kind of a cost, an idea, some kind of a plan? Would that be, would that be you?
Yeah, I think we should do that, so.
I think.
I'm sorry. Nina?
I don't know if this is like possible, but for donations, like for NHS, I know for Shepherd Hill would be more than happy to have like a donation that people, students, the community, some sort of fundraiser.
Funds for things like that, so yeah, absolutely.
Maybe a gift account.
Yeah. So as we transition, though, like, just to make sure we're on the same page, what are the next steps coming out of this?
Out of the bylaw?
Oh, no, just in general, like, in a sense, like, what happens next? Because, and I'll be candid, what often happens, people come up with some great ideas, and the board throws our ideas in it, and then it goes into a black hole. So I think we all agree that there's a littering problem in town, and I want to congratulate your entire team on, for volunteering to try to take that on. It's kind of like, you know, assistive fist pushing that rock up the hill. But what's a true tangible next step? Would you want to come back in a month or two for discussions? Or what do we want to do next so that we actually have, so that we actually have a plan?
Well, I think we need a plan for funding, obviously, you know, because it's not going to happen. Just volunteer effort as much as. Just volunteer effort as much as we'd like to think that. I think that's a tough road to hope, but if we, if we can find a way to fund it, that's what we should be talking about. And again, getting back to my, my other point, the only time we're gonna have an opportunity to do that is when we're talking to these companies about TIFs and things like that. I mean, when we have leverage, we say, we say to them, you wanna come down or the, or this, the guy up on Dresser Hill, you gotta, you gotta permit him, right? I, I would say you're responsible for a half a mile around here. You're gonna clean that up every week.
We are constricted by that though, just by, just by law, meaning that. It's not his property. What you're saying conceptually makes sense, legally speaking though, we can't basically attach something onto it to say, look, realistically, we know that you, that people are gonna be throwing clam fritters out the window, so you have to go pick them up. We just can't do that.
Could we put a surcharge or a fee on his license for liquor control?
I'm just speaking for myself here. I would hesitate to charge businesses surcharges like that, only because I wanna encourage more business to come in, whereas I appreciate that there are NIPS flying out the window, et cetera, but I'm also not gonna go after our local liquor stores either for that, because that's when the onus on the business as opposed to the person committing the crime. Now, I, I can absolutely see both sides, because if you didn't have one, you wouldn't have the other. However, just from my own political philosophy, I personally have an issue with that. I understand why people would recommend it. I can't say I would support that, but again, I'm one of, you know, five.
It's just an idea.
No, absolutely, and that's what I'm trying to think.
And you're never gonna catch the people that are out there doing it.
Yeah.
So, how do you, how do you fight the problem? Or do you just ignore it? What do you do? You gotta do something.
Well, ignoring it, ignoring it's not. And that's why I say, and that's where I think, you know, what I would probably recommend is, you know, work with the Board of Health, because my understanding is that your authority falls, in a sense, that you're appointed by the Board of Health, is work through them on changes to the bylaw, because my understanding is that at least under its current form, they weren't receptive to it. So, perhaps, perhaps work with them to, to come up with something that they'd be more amenable to sponsor, or you could always sponsor yourselves, et cetera, and then maybe come back with like some tangible proposals of, this is what we'd recommend, you know, Pat and like Basha, like you said around, well, you know, here's pricing or figures to say, here's what we would need, here is specifically what we could discuss. Because I think your ideas are good, I just think that we need to make them a little more concrete, so we, so we can have a discussion. But again, I appreciate everything you're doing on this.
With the business too, I, I agree with Bill. I happen to agree with him on that one.
I look yourself to pray.
No, but, but I don't see anything wrong with, for example, when we, when we welcoming them in town to have that discussion ahead of the time and say, this is what we expect, not necessarily, you know, with the full blown penalties here and why not, but just, just make sure that we communicated clearly. And I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with having some kind of a poster or, or, or anything on that specific business, especially on the ice cream, in the Dresser Hill. I mean, yeah, obviously, maybe there would, there would be a place that they can put some kind of a verbiage. Absolutely, I agree with that.
Or, or, or it might just be simply verbiage and a trash barrel.
Yeah, something funny, doesn't have to be there.
A lot of people, a lot of people eat up there. I think it's more like, when you, it's more the driving goal, kind of Dunkin's and, and, but it's culture, it's signs, I, I absolutely.
We're about 10 minutes over. I just wanna make sure that we.
Yeah, okay.
What I probably recommend is early Q1, you wanna come back to us, maybe with some tangibles. The only reason I mention that is that, even though it's bizarre to say, even though we just, even though we just finished our last town meeting, we're gonna be discussing the warrant for like the next one, come, come Q1. So, if there are, you know, specific things that you, you know, budget wise or like anything else, let's have those conversations sooner than later.
Well, with the by, a bylaw idea, would that go on the town warrant and does that go through you first?
So, short answer, the Board of Selectmen approves the warrant. We can sponsor our own items, however, what I'd probably recommend is that again, I don't wanna get into a turf war with the Board of Health. I'd probably recommend that you try to work through them first. In the absence of that, you could have a different board sponsor you or potentially just do a citizen's petition as well. Generally, when it comes to the appointed boards like this, you, normally protocol says that you go through your, your, your appointing authority. That's not always a steadfast rule, so if the rest of the board disagrees with me, that's a whole different conversation. But that'd be my advice. I'd probably try that first and then, whoops, sorry, and then we could just play through it after that. But, but short answer, yes, it, it ultimately has to go in front of town meeting.
And one last thing, working on the numbers, if we can use the local businesses for that nursery and I like, it'll be awesome.
Steve, Steve, final thought? Final thought is, is you mentioned you don't wanna see, well, we don't wanna see this fall into a black hole. I definitely don't wanna see this fall into a black hole, so I hope everybody can work together on this.
Right, we're gearing up for spring on this. We really think of pushing education and community involvement and the thought that maybe a bylaw would firm everything up is what we like.
It's a good, everybody, Board of Health, Board of Health has been extremely busy the last couple of years, this year hopefully might be a little easier, maybe not, but I'm glad you guys are here. Thanks, Deb, thanks, Joe, seriously, Joe, we appreciate it. Next up, and I apologize for the delay, we're talking Board of Health. I wish I could say this was a, gonna be a fun conversation, but John, you up? We're talking Gould Road Cemetery Road and the, also the capping of the landfill. Hey, Matt, what's going on?
So, we'll take them in order, is that it?
You know what, whatever makes you happy. I wanna make you guys happy.
How much time do we have?
To make you happy? Not that much time.
No, how much time to, to go through everything?
Ah, you can do it in 10, 15 minutes.
Okay. Gould Cemetery Road. So, Andrew was on the DEP call on November 17th, right? It was a long call, as I recall, an hour and a half or so, and I took some notes, so let me just briefly go through this, hopefully anybody who's listening and folks here in the audience will get the gist of what's going on. First of all, Mark Baldi, who was our representative from DEP, who was our liaison and the man in charge is no longer in charge, it's somebody else called Mary, I'm sorry, Amy Sullivan. So, she is the site manager. The whole issue here is MTBE additive in gas, which was outlawed by Massachusetts in 2016. I was surprised, I thought it was before that, but there's another, something called TBA in, in some of the water samples too. It's a T butyl alcohol, first time I had heard of that. The biggest takeaway from the call and the findings from all of the research that was done is that the well samples in the area have never exceeded DEP's safe water drinking standards and the concentrations have remained stable or are declining with time. Not my words, this is, I don't know if it was Mark or somebody else who said that. They went into some really technical stuff that just went way over my head. They were talking about something called carbon 12 versus carbon 13, but the bottom line is that ExxonMobil was determined not to be the cause of the contamination from the wells in that area. And it wasn't just the, the experts that ExxonMobil hired, it was also a peer consultant from DEP and we ran it through CMG Environmental Services, Gary Magnuson, and everybody's in agreement. It's, it's, unfortunately, I guess, for, for people who are looking for a, a fix for this, it was determined that they were not, they were not the, the site. So, discussion then went around areas of Coptic Church. DEP went out there, did some limited investigation on a suspected area of where the underground tank may have been. No findings discovered at that site. The tank was probably fuel oil, not gas and would not be a significant source of MTBE anyway. So, as of now, DEP will not be undertaking more investigating regarding Gould Cemetery Road unless someone comes forward with more information. Another interesting fact, one of the engineers, I believe, said that this could have been possibly only a five to 10 gallon spill of gasoline. So, somebody just literally like dropped a five gallon gas of, a can of gas over and it just spilled into their lawn and made its way, I mean, they, they said it's entirely possible. Could also be a diesel fuel spill. So, the residents, of course, are still looking for some sort of, if not resolution, some sort of action plan going forward. They asked if the town, whether it's the Selectmen, Board of Health, would continue to work with the affected wells to maintain clean drinking water and have somebody monitor wells one to two times per year, which of course is a cost. This is, this will be an ongoing discussion with our board, I'm sure. And actually, this is also on the agenda for January 4th for our Board of Health meeting, so we'll have, I'm sure, people, if not in person, it may be a Zoom call because of the way COVID's going, but, but it will be on discussion for January 4th. There's some other interesting things. Somebody brought up that there's a rail line with, within 100 yards of some of the houses that were affected. I don't know the area that well, I mean, I've been over there a number of times throughout my 30 plus years here in town, but, so this, this will be another point of discussion going forward. Our engineer, Gary Magnuson, actually said, you know, there's, there's certain things that we can do. We could, we could look for suspected sources, but you look at a map of the area and it's just, it's pretty extensive. You'd have to now go to property owners and say, okay, folks, can we come on your property and investigate and start drilling holes and so forth on all these properties and which way do you go? Well, the engineers will tell you, you gotta go upstream from where the striations of the bedrock are and so forth, so you could kind of get it, but, you know, needle in a haystack. I hate to say that, but it's kind of what we're up against for that. Let me see if I've got anything else. So, Gary Magnuson's had questions for our Board of Health at our last meeting. He said, you know, the question that we need to discuss going forward, do you wanna find the source of the MTBE contamination in the area or do you wanna focus on reducing exposure to MTBE impacted water at the known locations? So, again, January 4th, that's what we'll be discussing with some of the, some of the residents in the area who have affected wells. I've covered most of the stuff, but I'm sure you've got something to add, Matt.
I'll just say, basically, we know that the, there's some houses that have water that's probably not a great idea to drink. It is below the standard, but it is contaminated with some, some nasty stuff in it. Our board, while ExxonMobil was doing their thing, we just tried to be proactive, trying to make sure that that particular area didn't get in the dark hole that you guys have been talking about. So, we just kinda, as a board, we, we just stayed on it to make sure that everything we could do as a town to protect those residents and that's what we did. The findings were that ExxonMobil's not, is not gonna be the source of that. And like John said, it could have been a 10 gallon release, it could have been a car accident, they're non reportable, it could have been anything. So, that's the bad news. The relatively good news is all of those residents that we're aware of know that there's an issue and they're not drinking the water or have been instructed not to drink the water. So, we have as a, as a board or as a town, we have provided due diligence to the, to the tune of saying, listen, there's a problem, everybody needs to know about it. And our team's gonna continue to notify new residents and people in that area while we look for a long-term solution. I do think that ExxonMobil's pulling out with the, the water filtration systems. Sounds to me like they may sell them to the homeowners for a dollar. I think there's two of them. If they wanna keep them, it's, you know, it's paperwork, basically, if they'd like them removed. And like John said, we're kind of at a fork in the road now. It's like, do we, do we continue to chase where it came from? Do we try and find a solution to make it better for those residents on the drinking aspect? And so, that's where we're at now with it, but all in all, we did what we could, but it doesn't look like we're gonna get a free water line down, down that area, so.
You know, I think it's, I was on that call for a bit and it's one of those great examples of correlation does not equal causation, in that I think when everyone first heard about this, all of our ears perked up and said, oh, it's gotta be Exxon. And come to find out, you had a bunch of brilliant scientists in that college, John, like you. I'm like, within 30 seconds, like, I don't even know what you're talking about, you know, type of thing, because it was all advanced organic chemistry and I was like, look, just know. But I think it was like three different, three different studies or, or different analyses all pointed to the same conclusion, i.e. it wasn't Exxon. So, we don't know, to your point, no one knows what it was or is. We didn't figure what it is. And it sounds like you're having a meeting on January 4th, was it?
Yes.
January 4th, you know, I would recommend everyone dial in, have a conversation and then honestly, we just have to keep in touch and figure out how we can best support and, you know, again, talking about next steps of what do we do next as a larger community, but, you know, I'm not gonna step on your toes with this. You guys know, know more about it than we do, so, you know, you, you give us the recommendation and then we'll, you know, hash it out.
Okay, and I, I'm sure Jim is in, in contact with Andrew also on anything of significance with this, so you will be kept in the loop.
As Andrew looks in horror at the science that he has to figure out.
I mean, really, the, the real, it's like, what can you do, right? Well, it's really gonna be to provide some type of funding down the road to have certain wells tested, whether it's residents that say, yeah, go ahead, test mine or we, you know, I'm not saying drill a well, but I'm sure we'll find a well that we can test. We're gonna have to, you know, kind of be diligent and get on some type of schedule. Our team, the Board of Health, we tried to do that on, at the landfill on Burlingame Road and we had, we had like target houses that we thought could be in a potentially hazardous zone, so we, we chopped them up into one, two and three and we, we test the ones on one year, the twos a second year and nobody wanted to do it. We got one resident out of nine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, didn't, didn't most folks say no at the end of the day?
Yeah, they did. And we did get to test one, that one house came up clean with no contamination. So, you know, the board was, again, trying to stay ahead of it. Then we have Flint Road, which is on the high side of the landfill and we're having hits on that. So, you know, which is another story. So, our board is on top of it, we know what's going on, we've, we've reached out to all the residents. I think Jim's even knocked on doors to just let people aware of what's going on, you know? So, at this point, it's, it's not forgotten, but there's not a whole lot we can do other than come up with a plan to keep some type of well testing going.
Like you said, I appreciate, I'm sure I speak for the board on this one. I appreciate, we appreciate everything that you guys are doing on this. I know this one's not easy, so, well, you know, well done. As, as far as, I mean, one house with a contaminated well, in my opinion, there's too many, but how many are affected, do you think?
John, if I may.
Ballpark number.
There's two that have filtration systems. And again, both of those are below the standard, the water, the standard is 70, both of those are below 35. I do believe one's at 30 and the other one's below that. And then I think there's maybe a handful that have like trace hits or J hits, what they call, but there's not, well, I guess there's quite a few. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14 with trace, trace amounts of it. Very low levels of contamination, but again, contamination is contamination, so we're, we're doing what we can to at least let everybody know it's out there.
Yep.
So.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Matt. Patsy, Basha, anything for you? Izzy, Neil? Speaking of landfills, let's talk landfill, unless you have more you wanna talk around.
That's enough. Yeah, anymore, my head'll be spinning. Get into the real technical stuff, carbon 12 and carbon 13 again. So, landfill, as everyone here is probably aware, the, the town approved the $2 million for the capping of, I'll make sure I get this right, because there's two, 54, the old landfill, which is not capped. So, this has been going on for years. I can't, maybe you'll remember when that, when that landfill was officially closed and no longer having refuse put into it, but.
I believe it goes back to the early 80s, late 90s, uh, late 70s?
Yeah, it's been a long time. So, DEP's been obviously monitoring this and we've, as a board and predecessors that, that came long before us have been aware of it, but the, the DEP's getting a bit louder, so to speak, and we now are getting strongly hinted that the capping is gonna be coming pretty quickly. So, thank you to the town and the townspeople for approving the appropriation of the $2 million. We'll be working with, I believe it's just CMG Environmental at least to start, unless they need to bring in some additional experts, but we'll work with them once the DEP says, okay, you got the funding, now give us a plan. So, we've got most of the background now in place so that we can move forward and keep DEP happy, get everything done. I don't know the timeline of this, it would take.
That would be my question.
Yeah, but we haven't even brought that up. It, it would take a while and then, of course, it has to be monitored for, what is it, 30 years? Something like that, 30 years, and that's assuming that all the testing that, that goes on over that timeframe comes back to their satisfaction. So, it's, it's gonna be a long haul. We won't be around probably to see the, the final on that.
Yeah, so with that one, the 54 Flint Road, we kind of kicked that can down the road for years and years and years. And there was a clause in there at one point about like the old burn dumps, and if it was a burn dump, it may not have to be capped. And it was kind of quiet. DEP really didn't stir up any commotion about that. We knew about it and we didn't say anything. As they went to 90 Flint Road, we're like, oh, 54 is over there and it's going to be a matter of time. Back when Jim Malley was on board with us and, you know, we would have this discussion all the time. And so now it's basically, we've been proactive with it. We've been testing those wells. There were eight or nine of them. They were so grown in, we couldn't even get to them, and we've, you know, we've been on it. But the problem is we've had trace hits of the 1-4 dioxide on that side, and now it's caught the attention of DEP. With this action plan, we now know that DEP is going to make us cap it, which is the right thing to do anyways. It's just about the money, and it's always about the money. So we're trying to get the funding in place so when DEP says, hey, it's time to cap it, this is what you need to do, we're not caught short, and basically the town of Charlton remains in full compliance at all times. So that's where we're at with it. We're proactive on it right now. We don't know exactly, you know, what is going to happen as far as timeframe or what they're going to make us do. And who knows? It could be an opportunity for our town to be able to do something there. Maybe we can put solar on it, maybe there's something we could do. We could take in this calm material and, you know, maybe make some money as a town if we wanted to talk about that with some, it's not a dirty dirt, but it's a light dirt, and they put lightly contaminated dirt, and they put that on landfills. So there's a lot we can do as this unfolds, but for right now, we're just trying to stay ahead of it.
Now that the DEP knows that we've got the money available, now they'll be probably calling Jim next week.
But I think this one was a good example of our respective boards working along with FinCom to, Matt, to your point, to be more proactive on this, because the last thing we wanted to be, A, is out of compliance, and B, something DEP breathing down our necks. So what are you guys doing right now?
Yeah.
At least we have a plan. And now, in a sense, we're waiting on DEP, which is odd, but it's a nice position to be in, because now we can all work together and say, look, we took care of this, we have the money, let's figure it out together. So, you know, kudos to you and Jim and, you know, obviously the entire Board of Health team for that.
Well, if you don't mind, when we originally capped the 90 Flint Road, the old landfill, we had a FAM, it was a financial mechanism to cap that. So when it finally came time to cap that, we had the funding source to do that, and that didn't go well for the town at all. And they sent me, I was the newest member of the board, and they sent me down to the floor to ask for $2 million back in the day.
I love the fact that you were sent to visual land. That is fantastic.
So we've learned from that, you know, that was a rough experience. We had a really hard time with that landfill. It was, you know, I'm glad that one's behind us. So, yeah, that's not going to happen again. This time we're ahead of it, so.
Well done. Comments for the rest of us before we? John, Matt, seriously, thank you along with Pete for everything that you guys did along with Jim. So anything we can do to help, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. All right, next up, we are a few minutes behind, so I apologize to the petitioners, but we're doing a public hearing. So please be advised, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 7:15 at Charlton Town Hall, Selectmen's Meeting Room 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507. To act on a request by attorney, forgive me, is it Kyle Akil?
Kyle Becker.
Thank you, Kyle. Attorney Kyle Becker, oh, sorry. Sorry, my powers back on. All right, to act on a request by attorney Kyle Becker on behalf of Incom Inc., 294 South Padre Road, Charlton, Mass., to remove 10.02 acres of land located off South Padre Road from Chapter 61, Charlton, Mass., release is shown and plan entitled, "Proposed LNG Facility Site Boundary Assessment Map 62-A-6. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing." Public hearing is open. Kyle, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you had a great summary, just in the public notice in itself. All we're requesting is that 10 acres of, currently 62 acres of 61 land be allowed to be reclassified. As part of that, we do need to request from the Board of Selectmen a waiver of the right to purchase. This is in itself a 30-year lease with two consecutive 20-year periods in which they can tack on an extension. Over the 30 years, roughly $1,440 will be paid in rents, which is the amount which we would request if the option to purchase be executed for. With that being said, I think everyone is already aware of the LNG proposition, and if anybody has any questions, we're happy to try to facilitate and do the best of our ability. However, again, this is just simply a request to remove the 61 land.
Thanks, Kyle. Yeah, so this is our standard 61. All of the boards that we queried, none of them had a majority vote to exercise the right of first refusal. So if there are questions for Kyle, we can have them now.
I think we already went over details on this.
Yeah, I think there's no reason for us to have the meeting.
Cool. All right, hearing done, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Public hearing is closed. Let's take a vote either way, please. Again, the motion would be to not exercise the right of first refusal.
Can I make a motion to not exercise the right of first refusal?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Basha. Discussion. Hearing done. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. You guys are all set. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Board.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kyle. See you, sir. All right, let's talk new business. License renewals by the Board of Selectmen now that we are back on track for time.
All right. Attached is a list of licenses to be renewed by the Board of Selectmen for year 2022. The building and finance, or fire departments are recommending approval of the liquor license renewals pending the resolution of outstanding inspection items. Police Department has given their approval. It's recommended that the board approve the 2022 license renewals as presented pending all paperwork and fees are received.
Just for the folks know at home, we're talking like 70 or 75 of these things. So it's literally anyone with like a license ultimately in town, it gets renewed every year, but we go through them to make sure that all the paperwork's proper, there haven't been any significant issues, things along those lines. So any discussion by the board on this one?
I do have a question. And based on just one memo here from a building commissioner where he said, "The fire and building have completed all the required inspections. Some of the businesses have outstanding items. Captain Carson will visit these businesses with outstanding items the week of December 6." That, to me, that seemed a little vague. I don't know what the, do we have any idea what those issues are, or is it?
Well, maybe something as small as, you know, there was a back door that was blocked with garbage, and they need to, you know, I guess rectify the issue and come back for a re-inspection. But essentially, prior to this meeting, they had at least gone to all of the businesses for an initial inspection with only a few, you know, probably nothing that couldn't be remediated before the end of the calendar year.
Okay. And his recommendation is the Selectmen approve all licenses pending the resolution of the outstanding inspection items on December 14th. I just wanted to make sure that, as long as it's not anything major, I mean, we certainly want to be fair to the people that are following all the rules for the licensing. And if it's an egress issue or something major, but it was very vague. If he could, in the future, if he can get a little more detail on what that. It was, in my opinion, it was a little vague. Outstanding items, that's all it said.
Yeah, Andrew, let's put that down for next year to just to kind of asterisk those that have issues and just to give us an elevator speech around, you know, here's what the issues are, here's what the plan is to fix it.
Yep. We don't necessarily need to know who, we just want to know what it is, in my opinion.
Cool. Anything else from the board for discussion? Do we have a motion?
Can I make a motion that we approve all the licenses on the list?
Pending the resolution of outstanding.
Pending the resolution of.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Pending the resolution of the items, outstanding items.
I second that one.
Okay, I'm going to go Basha on that. I was just going to say for discussion, I am abstaining from any votes on the quarter keg pub, but outside of that, I'm fine with everything else. So all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous with my abstentions on the QKP. All right, Temp Department Assistant. Andrew, you want to talk us through this?
Sure. So with the Assistant Town Clerk currently out on extended leave, election worker Gene Vincent has filled in to assist the office in his absence. In general, Gene has been able to provide at least 15 hours per week of coverage to the office during this time. As it's unclear how long the Assistant Town Clerk will be out, I am recommending that the board appoint Ms. Vincent to the position of Temporary Department Assistant during this period. It had been discovered, although that Ms. Vincent has held multiple positions on the planning board and within elections previously, the board had not taken the action to designate those positions as Special Municipal Employee. I recommend that the board make the appointment of Ms. Vincent to the position of Temporary Department Assistant and designate the positions of Department Assistant, Election Worker, and Planning Board Member as Special Municipal Employee.
Thoughts of the board?
I think it's been happening for a while anyways, and it makes sense.
All right, do I have a motion?
I think my question would be, does this, maybe this question's more for Karen, does this, does this mean Gene would be able to fulfill the duties that Eric did, or?
No, not, not Mrs. Full Assistant Town Clerk duties.
Yeah.
So there's some things she can't sign that he could do in my absence, she can't.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Steve, discussion. Hearing done, is it a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Gene, keep up the good work. Next up, we're declaring surplus of bicycles from, I think, 1936. Andrew, you want to walk, what's the elevator speech on this one?
All right. Police are requesting four bikes and two bike racks to be deemed as surplus property. They're about 23 years old. We're looking to put them on municipal for a minimum of $100 apiece. I'm sorry, $100 for all four.
I saw Chief Dowd, it's one of those enormous ones with like the big wheel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chief Dowd was going on the street.
He was hugging the horse.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But did you look at the name brand of these bicycles?
I did.
Like Wizard of Oz.
I should know.
Smith &amp; Wesson, who would think? Look at us.
Smith &amp; Wesson, it's not a Schwinn. It's a Smith, they're all Smith &amp; Wesson.
We can have a kid picking up the letter.
There you go.
I will note that police decaying has been removed.
Thank you, very much. Did they take off any little blue lights on the front of it?
I see.
Yeah.
Cheap, right? We can have the kids, you know, on those bikes picking up the letter.
No, they go off their surplus. Look, I'm trying to bring money into the town.
That'll buy a flower pot.
Exactly, there's a flower pot.
They can save on, you know, your employee.
Killing me.
For the trash picking.
Do I have a motion either way?
Yes.
I will.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. So this is to declare them as surplus. Any further discussion? Hearing done, is it a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Chief, get rid of those, thank you.
So there'll be like a big auction in the town common?
Yeah, exactly. No, it goes, actually, there actually is a formal process. It goes on municipal, is that right, Chief? All right, Andrew, I know we have a small amendment to the ARPA plan under Old Business.
Yep, so basically elevator speech, just looking for an amendment to that Phase 1 plan to authorize $90,000 of the funds to be appropriated for public safety core network upgrades to be facilitated by Jeff. I don't know if Jeff, if he wanted to give any additional information, but, you know, we had been looking at appropriating some money toward IT infrastructure, and we think that this is kind of like the best, you know, best initial use of some.
Jeff, talk to me, 30 seconds.
Good evening. So the core updates to PD and Fire will facilitate a few things, that they solve a few problems. One is the speed upgrade, connection between buildings, 10x increase in speed. Two, it's also with the new radio system that's going to be implemented, it's going to help a lot with that. Third is cybersecurity, and actually the fourth would be a second backup fiber connection between PD and Fire together, rather than hub from Town Hall to each building. They'll have a backup as well. Questions for Jeff? Well done. Thoughts from the board?
Sounds good to me.
I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
This goes, so this $90,000 goes on top of that, the 2.1 that we've already, so we're still.
Correct, correct.
So well below the floor.
Yeah, we are well below what we need.
No, no.
So Vice Chairman, do I have a motion? Steve, for second, any discussion? Hearing done? All's in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Andrew, do you want to give a shout out, or actually, I'd ask you to give a shout out to our legislative partners?
Yeah, so I was made aware that there was a $50,000 year mark for the town of Charlton in the Massachusetts Legislature's ARPA bill that was just passed yesterday. Essentially, that was for the implementation of the paperless document management system that we had put in, or that we had funded initially, so we are starting to at least look at that, but really just wanted to thank our legislative delegation, you know, all of our representatives who got this into the bill and then made sure it got through the legislature and to pass.
Speaking of which, very briefly, I've been in contact with State Senator Fatman's office, well, Representative Durant's office. The Home Rule petition has been filed for the removal of police from civil service. It's going to be a while before it actually happens, April probably at the earliest, but this is all coming round in that we've invited Representative, pardon me, State Senator Fatman to come in to introduce himself over the next month or so, so just kind of tying that up under Old Business. Jeff, you're good, thank you. Chief, you're good too, apparently.
We're good?
Oh, what's it?
We're good?
Yeah.
Unless you want to hang around.
No.
You want to delay police contract until after exec?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to talk in exec session around police contract, and then we're going to come back out more than likely to take a vote, just so everybody knows.
Do you need to get the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
The rest will go quick, I promise. We have no BS committee reports, we have no BS policies. Any questions on Andrew around his TA goals?
No.
No, cool. All right, let's talk to the fun part of the evening. Izzy? What's going on, Big?
Okay. So, school happenings. The yearbook is underway. Okay, so, school happenings, the yearbook is underway, senior quotes are due into Ms. Wilson by January fourteenth, progress reports come out on Friday, the seventeenth, and Gray's closed today, the Minuteman Shop is open for curbside pickup for school merchandise, I know a lot of people were asking about buying school merchandise for Christmas, and the store website is underway also, and is in the process of waiting for approval from our business office. Freshman students have one more exploratory until they pick their official shops, they choose their shops the week after January seventh. This year, freshman and sophomore students have the opportunity to choose our brand-new shop, Veterinary Technologies. Between now and Christmas break, teachers are now, are competing in a holiday wall transformation, each teacher has the opportunity to decorate the walls outside their classrooms with a seasonal scene for the chance to win a prize. My shop is doing one also, it's turning out pretty well, I do see it myself.
Turning to a politician, right?
Teacher of the Month nominations are open for the month of December, and students can use the QR codes located around the school in order to nominate their favorite teacher. Sports recaps, the boys varsity basketball team won their opening home game against North Brookfield last night with a wide sports point spread of seventy-eight to twenty-eight, good job, boys. The girls varsity team also won their first home game in a nail-biter against North Brookfield, it was a tough matchup, and the score ended up twenty-nine to twenty-eight, good job to both teams. For extracurriculars, indoor track meets have now been postponed indefinitely due to COVID, practice times are changing from being until four fifteen to every day, to only being until four fif, until four fifteen on Monday and Thursdays, and then on, until three thirty on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then we have off on Fridays. NHS has moved their induction ceremony to the winter, to now the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, dates are to come. Bay Path Drama Club is presenting their talent show tomorrow, Wednesday the fifteenth, so if anyone would like to attend, that is going on at our school.
That's pretty cool.
So.
Well done.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Questions for Izzy? Hearing done, that means that you made a good report.
Great.
All right, Nina, up to you, and remember, it's not a competition, but.
Okay, well, here at Shepherd Hill, it is also time to think of those who are less fortunate, so our National Honor Society has concluded its annual Thanksgiving food drive, so turkeys, canned goods, and all the money was used to purchase other essentials for Thanksgiving, for Thanksgiving dinner, we collected from students and faculty to create baskets for our local families in need. So now that turkey season's over, we're moving on to the holidays, so NHS is also concluding, well, almost concluding their toy drive, so the National Honor Society is collecting new unwrapped toys and donations until Monday, December twentieth, to give gifts to children in our community and the surrounding communities who may not otherwise receive it on any other holidays, so donations can be brought to the main office at Shepherd Hill, or please, or you can contact Mr. Stefan at C Stefan at DCRSD if you have any questions or concerns about any gifts or anything. So moving on to some of our clubs, so the Gender Sexuality Alliance, the GCA, meets every Wednesday after school, and the Wayside Youth and Family Support Network attended one of the recent meetings to speak with them about their weekly programs, and so in December, we are now introducing ten new LGBTQ plus books being added to the school library, and we are now, and we were able to do that through the Glenson Rainbow Library, so thank you. And so for skiing and snowboarding clubs, so now that it's December, and hopefully some snow will come.
Don't ever say that again.
Hopefully. Hopefully, for the skiers, so for all the skiers and snowboarders, our ski club signups are now open, so make sure you email Mr. Formir at T Formir at DCRSD for any questions. And so our Shepherd Hill Drama Club is now presenting Alice Wonderland in the Glass, which is being presented Friday, January seventh at seven PM, and Saturday, January eighth at seven PM. So tickets are fifteen dollars for adults and ten dollars for students and seniors, and kids five and under are free, and more ticket information is coming soon, not yet available. So moving on to super fun stuff, our AP tests payments, so please send in any payments for AP exams prior to January twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, so check or money orders must be made out to Shepherd Hill Regional High School, and College Board has set the prices for exam as follows. So exams are ninety-six dollars per class, and for AP capstone classes, like AP Seminar or AP Research, it's one hundred forty-four dollars per class, and for AP Physics, C classes is one ninety-two, and all these prices are reduced if you have free or reduced lunch students. So congratulations to our academic decathlon team, they had their first competition on November twentieth at Arlington High School, and they placed fourth, so well done, team. And starting our soup food drive, so we have January ninth at two thousand and twenty-two, we will host a drive-through soup drive, and so stay tuned for the link and for your pre-ordered hot soups on the cold winter nights. And just finally, for the whole Dudley Charlton District, we are in desperate needs of subs, so if anyone's interested in subbing for any of the schools in the district, please contact any of the schools you're interested in, and any information is there, if you need to contact the school, they'll help you with that, and that's it, and I just wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday.
Thank you, Nina, you too.
That's all.
Questions for Congressman Nina?
Christmas gifts, hundred and sixty for AP exam.
One forty-four for me, actually, I think a tree. No, it's one forty-four, not one sixty.
Exaggerating.
Yeah. I'm not an AP, not AP Physics, I'm an AP Research.
Oh, that was the worst class.
We were joking around prior to the meeting around college selections and things like that, but, but in all seriousness, I'm glad I'm thirty years older than you now, because there's no way I could compete with either one of you, you're both doing a fantastic job, and we're really, really happy to have you on the board, and I really, I mean, granted you used to have six more months with us, but I, or however many more months, I, maybe four or five, I don't know anymore, but I can't wait to see like what you guys do in the future, like I said, you guys are both doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you are, you know, really promoting your schools very well, and, like I said, they should be proud of you as well.
Thank you.
I, I agree.
We're happy to be here.
I suck at that motion.
Wait till budget season, you basically. All right, let's go TA report, Andrew.
Yeah, real quick, so just wanted to thank everybody who put together the tree lighting and Santa parade, last week was a great event, great turnout, you know, I brought my family out here on a, on a Sunday, and they, they really enjoyed it, so really just want to say kudos to everybody who volunteered to put that together. And then just as a reminder to the board, this, our only meeting this, this month, so happy holidays, great working with you all this year, more to come, and we down in dirty work starts next month.
There you go.
Thank you, Andrew, any other business that the board wants to discuss legally? Cool, all right, again, as Andrew mentioned, next meeting is going to be January, we're gonna go into executive session, there's a good chance we're gonna take votes when we come out of it, we probably won't be in it for long, but what I'd like to do is have somebody read the motion from page two of the agenda, if you have it, please.
Want me to do it?
Please, Patsy.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, go into executive session under MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, the police contract, and clerical union, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to reconvene to open session to take any action if needed to adjourn.
Thank you, Patsy, and the chair does declare, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, Steve?
Aye.
Basha?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are in executive session, but again, more than likely, we are coming out for a vote, or at least, I would assume we are. All right, let's take five minutes, and then we'll go through this.